And counsel in connection with the legal status of proposed labor agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Police Officers Association to include related grievances and claims affecting overtime pay calculations.
Mayor, I'll so move we go into executive session?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll be in executive session. Meeting is back to order. Good evening, everyone. How come we don't see you guys here at every meeting?
Yeah.
I want to thank everybody for attending this evening. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I want to ask Mark Trujillo, Oscar Osornio, and Martin Reynaga from Casañeda Elementary, are they present? Come on up, guys. They're going to lead us in the United States pledge and in the Texas pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one and indivisible.
Here, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for joining us this evening. Reverend Chuck Sherrill, there you are. Welcome, Reverend. He's going to lead us in the invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for everyone here present. We thank you for the gift of diversity, for different thoughts. We thank you, Lord, that your peace can guide and direct us. We pray this evening for wisdom, for insight on the decisions that we may be made. We pray for this city. We pray that crime would continue to cease and that there would be much harmony and much love in the city of Brownsville. We thank you for the government officials. We pray, or I pray your blessing on them, that much wisdom and insight would flow from their comments and their decisions tonight. And I pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. I'll tell you what. First one we're going to do is the Ball Boys and Ball Girls, Commissioner Arroyo. Who's here for that one? Come on, step forward.
All you guys and girls in blue.
What did it play? What is that sound? What did it play? Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. There you go.
Y'all come on over here. I'm going to give you the proclamation, then I'm going to start reading it. Good. Saw that in the paper.
Can I read one?
Tall guys in the back, shoulder to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and commending the 27 ball boys and ball girls on their excellent job in the recent men's professional tennis tournament. Whereas on February 25th, 26th, and 27th, the annual Brownsville Tennis Association, United States Tennis Association, USTA Futures Tournament, Men's Professional Tennis Tournament, was held at the Brownsville Tennis Center. And whereas an original field of 88 competitors was trimmed to 18 for the final three days of action, and whereas Rivetta High School tennis coach Danny Espinosa recruited and trained 27 students from local elementary, middle, and high schools to serve as ball boys and ball girls during those final three days of competition. And whereas, working in rotation because of the strenuous activity involved in the constant action of the game of tennis, the young volunteers earned the respect and admiration of players and fans alike. And whereas, in assessing their performance, Pete Cassavage, the official USTA All Future Tournament Supervisor, said, "Group members were well-trained, well-behaved, and motivated", in giving a top evaluation of the group's work in the tournament finals while praising the youngsters and Coach Danny Espinosa. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of this said city, we do hereby recognize and commend the 27 ball boys and ball girls for their hard work and professionalism while working with the recent Brownsville Tennis Association Men's Professional Tennis Tournament in our city. And this has been done on the 4th day of April, 2006, signed by the mayor and city commissioners. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You all, you made us very, very proud during that tournament.
My name is Daniel, my name is Daniel Espinosa. I am a ball kid from the front of the tennis center. I've, I have played tennis for six years and I've had a great experience. Thank you.
We hope to see all of you, I guess, out at the next year's tournament? All right. Well, we want to thank you all for being with us and for making sure that you represent Brownsville well in this tournament. Thank you all for being here.
Keep up the good work.
Keep up the good work.
Who is here for the Week of the Young Child? Well, if not, then we're going to pass on this resolution. We'll make sure we get ahold of them for next meeting. Stella?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next, we'll go to National Kite Month. Commissioner Chisneros.
Is there anybody, is there anybody here?
Is there anybody here from the National Kite? Excellent. Step forward.
Do you want to come up, please?
The proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating April 2006 as National Kite Month and further recognizing Team SPI. Whereas on March 11th and 12th, 2006, Team SPI, for the fourth consecutive year, provided a spectacular show of kite ballet and aerobatics for the commemorative Air Force Air Fiesta. And whereas, Team SPI members Robert Guy Blatnick, Claudia Steen, Jeff, and Donna McCown have won the American Kite Flyers Association's National Sport Kite Championship twice, the Central United States Championship three times, the State Championship four times, and placed eighth in the world in Berge-sur-Mer, France. And whereas, Team South Padre Island has won numerous other awards in kite ballet and aerobatics and continues to delight audiences with its precision kite flying at kite shows worldwide. And whereas, Team SPI performs free of charge the first weekend of every month, weather permitting, in Cameron County on the flats just north of South Padre Island Convention Center. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby designate April 2006 as National Kite Month and further recognize Team SPI for its kite flying prowess and still further urge all our citizens to go fly a kite, done on this 4th day of April 2006, signed our mayor, by our mayor Eddie Trevino Jr., and this Brownsville City Commission. Congratulations.
For those of you who did not have the opportunity to go to the airshow this year, to watch them perform their work is truly, truly spectacular. If you'd like to say something, feel free. I know you let your flying do the talking for you, but, but we look forward to seeing you again and thank you for, for sharing your talent with us.
Good show. Thank you.
Is there anybody here from Sombrerito Fest? Skip? Oh. We're talking about the leaders, not the participants. All right.
Tommy, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Tonight I'm here, by the way, I'm Tommy Permuiz President for 2006 for Sombrerito Festival. The reason I'm here tonight is that I, I want to thank you all for your support this year. We couldn't have done it without you, from top to bottom. The City Parks, Skip Keller, our City Police Department Chief Garcia and his police officers, thank you very much. I'm proud to announce that we broke all records this year. It hadn't been done since 1999. And it took effort from, like I said, from the city mayor, from the city commissioners, to our officers and board of directors. So token appreciation, it's a special year especially, not only we broke records, but this year, when we met, we, our back logo, we put our city logo with our Brownsville City Parks and Brownsville Police Department. So it feels special that, and another good positive thing was that we saw a lot of all the shirts, okay? So it hasn't happened either since 99. So this time Sergio Rodriguez, my VP of Events, will pass the shirts and also the token appreciation is our invitation for our annual batting the back party, which will be held Friday, April the 28th.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support. We are already in our planning stages for next year, so.
Thanks, Eddie.
See you soon. Thanks a lot.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Tommy, congratulations. You all did an excellent job this year. I know I was out there and you guys had great entertainment and everyone had a great time, so. And I know Mother Nature played a big part on it.
That's.
Good to y'all this year.
That's 100% of the festival too, but thank you for all your support.
The next proclamation we have is for National Telecommunicators Week.
The following is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating April 9th through the 15th, 2006, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in our city. Whereas emergencies that require police, fire, or emergency medical services can occur at any time. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Brownsville Police Department Emergency Communication Center. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the first and most, and most critical contact of our citizens have with emergency service. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link from, for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety dispatchers of the Brownsville Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby designate April 9th through the 15th, 2006, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in our city. This is done this 4th day of April, 2006. It's signed Eddie Trevino Jr., our mayor, and the rest of the city commission. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the commission, on behalf of the, all our dispatchers, we'd like to thank you for this recognition. Next week is Teleca, National Telecommunicators Week. We invite you all, we invite the public to come by and visit with our dispatchers to see their key role as far as success of the Brownsville Police Department. They're behind the scenes, nobody gets to see much of them other than talk to them on the phone, but they are that vital link between the victim, the complainant, and the police officer, make sure that we, we provide timely response. So on behalf of the police department, especially our dispatchers, we thank you very much.
On behalf of the commission and city, we want to thank you for the lifesaving work that you do on a daily basis. Thank you very much. All right. Item two, we have a presentation for Employee of the Month. Mr. City Manager.
It's rough. I'm sorry. Thought she was on there. She's on.
Mayor, members of the commission, please help me welcome Stacy Elada. She is our Employee of the Month for April 2006. Elada's been working for the city for approximately five years and she's assigned to the golf course. She looks like one of these young golfers winning a lot of money right now, but she's usually not a golfer. She runs that place. And actually, with the current problems we've had there, she's taken over the leadership of the place and done, done a wonderful job for us and we really are praising her for that with giving her this award. She is the Employee of the Month for April, as I stated. Stacy gets a day off of her choice with pay and is now eligible for selection of Employee of the Month for the year at our annual banquet in December. And of course, she gets a cap that she can wear when she golfs.
Thank you.
Our pin and our plaque.
Thank you.
And Skip's promised to take her to lunch and I think I'll go along and, and she's got a speech written for us, so. Stacy, it's your show.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Elada. I've been working for the city for five years. I've really enjoyed working at the golf center, keeping this place going. We're looking forward for improvements at the golf course. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work. Come on, Skip.
Mayor Commissioners, it's not very often that you get a great employee like this one, so I'm proud that she was selected for this honor. Stacy came to us a few years back. She worked for us one summer in the rec department. We taught her a lot of good customer service there. But she has taken over some duties that she had not been trained for. She never said, "That's not my job." She just said, "What can I do to keep this place running?" You don't find people like that very often and when I, when you do, we're going to keep her. So I'm, it's a privilege to have her working with my, one of my departments.
Thank you, Skip. Before we move on, I just want to remind everybody that on April the 29th, Dia de los Niños, we're going to have the second reading in the Mayor's Book of the Month Club, 3:00 PM at the Main Library on Central Boulevard. We want to invite all the kids there to attend. This is a joint project between the city, United Way and Success by Six, and I want to thank everybody that's participating and that's going to be participating in over the next year. All right. Back to business. Consent agenda, number three.
Item three, consent agenda items, items A and B.
So move to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Longori. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four.
Item four, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Airport Advisory
Mayor Members of the commission, as you may recall, there was an individual that the City Commission appointed by Mr. Steve Meadows. Mr. Meadows, when he checked, found that he was going to be unable to serve, so the commission is asked to act to either appoint or reappoint a person to this position.
The, the individual that was willing to serve was who again, Larry?
Well, you may be referring to Mr. Donahue. The person who was appointed before was Steve Meadows.
I understand that. He's declining. Who was the person who was?
Bill Donahue.
Mr. Bill Donahue, and he was with?
He is with, he's the owner of the Reddison Resort, long, former longtime Convent of the Bureau Chairman at South Padre Island.
All right. Does anybody?
To appoint him.
Motion to appoint by Commissioner Nettles.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. Mr. Donahue, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five.
Item, item five, consideration in action to appoint one new member to the Brownsville Beautification Committee.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, Maribel Permuiz-Guerrero wouldn't, couldn't make it to the meeting tonight. Her, she passed all the information on to Lisa, and Lisa will give you what she, the committee is, who the committee wants or is presenting.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Sorry for Maribel's absence. This commission appointment is going to be replacing Cynthia Garza Galván, whose appointment was up, expired in February of this year. In your packets, it was recommended that Mr. Gilberto Garza Jr. be appointed to this position.
That's all moved. This is Commissioner Longori's appointment?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Longori, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
He's going to have some big shoes to fill because Cynthia did a great job for us.
Right.
So we want to thank Cynthia. She's not here. We want to thank her on our behalf. She did a great job for all of us.
Yes, sir.
The city of Brownsville.
All right. Item six.
Item six, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2006-007-S to allow a light commercial specific use auto detail and auto sale shop in a general retail use district for lot 6 of block 242 of Brownsville Original Town Site near East 7th Street and Ringgold Streets.
Mayor, I'll move to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Commissioner Longori, seconded by?
Question. Is that an indefinite table?
No.
So you're going to bring it back?
For now, it's indefinite, no?
For now, it's, I'm sorry, an indefinite.
Indefinite table?
Yes, sir.
So it's dead.
Well, is it? Are they going, what's the deal with that?
Well, we can just vote either way today, or if we, if we're going to retable it, then we need to give a date to retable it, or rather, to reschedule it for. We can't just have an indefinite table.
Ben, as I understood, they were going to go through the board of adjustments. Is that correct? Are you aware of that?
I heard about that, but believe they were going to withdraw their application. They haven't done with this. That's our understanding. They'll go through the board of adjustments. No parties are here. We'll, we're requesting it be table for now.
So do we have to set a date?
Why don't we retable it for two meetings, for the 1st of the month of May and determine?
That way it's not there.
Is that your motion then, Commissioner?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Longori to table, two meetings, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. One nay?
One nay.
One nay. Item seven.
Item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of protested ordinance number 235-2006-012 to rezon from dwelling Z classification to professional office G classification, 2.566 acres out of 71.170 acre tract in A and Tandy Estate of Share 12 of Espiritu Santo Grant near West Alton Glor Boulevard and Expressway 7783.
Ben, do you want to read the other two items with us or not?
Can we do seven, eight, and nine together?
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of protested ordinance number 235-2006-012-S to allow a medium retail specific use wet restaurant and medium retail uses in a professional office use district for 2.566 acres out of 71.170 acre tract in the A and Tandy Estate of Share 12 of Espiritu Santo Grant near West Alton Glor Boulevard and Expressway 7783. Item number nine, public hearing in action on first reading of protested ordinance number 235-2006-601-CU, an ordinance amending the text of the city zoning ordinance by allowing a conditional use permit, the sale of alcohol for 2.566 acres out of 71.170 acre tract in the A and Tandy Estate of Share 12 of Espiritu Santo Grant near West Alton Glor Boulevard and Expressway 7783.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the property shaded in right here. What we have here is Alton Glor. You have the railroad tracks. This Alton Glor goes down to Military Highway and to the expressway on this side. You have some commercial zoning in place and you have the majority of the area residential. In this particular case, in this first application, the applicant wants to rezon from a residential setting to a second commercial. And then on item number nine, he's introducing a specific use that will allow a restaurant on a second commercial district. And on number 10, it's, it's to allow him to have a wet restaurant. This case went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was recommended for your approval tonight. We heard the Planning and Commission arguments from, from protest, during the protest petition, residents protesting and, and of course, the applicant. If you have any questions, I'll address them.
City Secretary Justice Corrigan, number nine, was for the wet bar. Number 10 was for the specific use on retail and print shop.
Okay.
Number 10?
Yep. Number nine is the wet bar?
Yeah, they said it backwards. You said it backwards.
No, number 10 has nothing to do with this one.
Yeah, number 10 has nothing to do with it.
Seven, eight, and nine.
Seven, eight, and nine.
Separate issue.
It's a 10.
All right. I assume there's some people here who would like to speak on this item this evening? First, I'd like to hear from, well, who's here to speak on this particular item? This is a public hearing. All right. If you all could please kind of get in line over here, I'm going to ask the applicant to please step forward to, to do his presentation and then we'll go forward from there. And I'd like to ask everybody to please keep their comments to a minimum if possible.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioners, Ms. Arroyo, my name is Dan Davidson. I'm the applicant for the piece of property there in question. I know you have some very important issues in front of you tonight. There are a bunch of people back there in uniform that I'm sure they're pressing you for an important decision and I will not take up more of your time than I absolutely have to. Only thing I would urge you to remember, ladies and gentlemen, is that your Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioners, voted in a five to one favor of this, of this issue. After much debate, they were in, as I say, five to one for it. I believe your building staff, permitting staff has, has found in my favor as far as this rezoning issue and the wet restaurant issue. You're going to hear tonight some argument against this petition, against this issue concerning such things as traffic issues, service of alcohol, being beer and wine in my, in my case, and the fact that this is a residential neighborhood and possibly not a commercial area. I, I would like to very quickly answer each and every one. I would like to very quickly answer each and every one of those items. Number one, Alton Glor is a very busy thoroughfare, very busy thoroughfare. I 110% agree with the residents out there and tell them that it is a very busy highway. I would also urge you to remember that in later '07, 2007, we are up, we are slated for text doc to improve this highway from a two-lane, which it is now, running in front of that property, to a four-lane with a fifth turning lane and with two bike lanes on either side. So it's not gonna stay the way you see it right now. Another issue that people have talked about is the service of beer and wine. I would tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that I am a family restaurant. I serve alcohol, beer and wine, not hard liquor, and I do not intend to serve hard liquor at the place in question here. I do not intend to serve hard liquor. I would tell you that you have in your information packets there figures something to the effect that the Vermillion serves only 13.5% alcohol of its total sales. I had an excess of $2 million worth of sales last year, and for the last several years. Only 13.5% of that, ladies and gentlemen, were, was alcohol. Eighty, if my math is right, 86.5% food. That's a predominance of food, as you can easily determine. I would tell you also that I added up the month of March of '06, just a few hours ago. It was by far the best month that the Vermillion has ever had in 70-some-odd years. And I would tell you that the service of alcohol, beer and wine in that location went down now to 11.8%. We dropped almost two more percentage points. We are not a cantina, ladies and gentlemen, we're not a, we are a family restaurant. If I serve 86% of $2 million worth of food, I serve it to a few families. More than a few families, ladies and gentlemen. There are many families that have been raised in that place right there, service of alcohol or no. I strive, and my staff strives, to be as professional in the service of alcohol and responsible in the service of alcohol as anybody in the City of Brownsville. I'll put my people up against, and my restaurant, in the service of alcohol, up against anybody in this town. I am as proud of those people as I can be. And I would tell the Lakeway and, excuse me, the residents out there, I would tell the residents out there, I know you're concerned about the service of alcohol, so am I. That's the reason why I'm so responsible in my service of alcohol. If I make some mistakes in the service of beer and wine out there, I get closed up. I cannot have that. So I am just as concerned with the service of alcohol as I have been for the past 40 years concerning the service of beer and wine. I do it responsibly now. I don't think there's any indication that I'm gonna change. And our percentage is going down too, I would point out. There's also been, it's also been pointed out that the residents out there are not in favor of this issue. I would tell you that's not exactly correct. I would tell you that there are good many people, and I think you're gonna hear from just a representative few tonight, that will tell you that there are a good many residents in those several neighborhoods out there that are very much in favor of this issue passing. We have, this issue has divided the neighborhood out there, ladies and gentlemen, and for that, I'm truly disappointed. I did not mean for this to happen, I did not mean for this to divide the neighborhood. I think you're gonna hear from some of the residents out there tonight that they have stuck together in innumerable issues. They've stuck together in opposition to certain issues coming before you and coming before the residents out there. But you're gonna hear that some of these residents now have broken off and have now support, are now supporting me, supporting this issue. I would urge you consider that the fact that this is not a universally approved or opposed issue. This is something that's disappointingly to me divided the neighborhood, and I would tell you that I would very much like to put this neighborhood back together. I am concerned with the neighborhood being divided. I don't want neighbor against neighbor, because I have every intention of being one of those neighbors one of these days. And I do not want my neighborhood opposed to me. Ladies and gentlemen, I just urge you to take it under consultation, do what you think best for the City of Brownsville. Oh, I did want to mention too, you probably have a drawing in front of you, a representation of what this project is gonna look like. I would tell you that we took great pride in making sure that this thing was representative, uniquely representative of the City of Brownsville. Not just any place, but representative of the most historic town south of San Antonio. This is gonna be a very representative issue of the, I mean, a project for the City of Brownsville. We hope to reflect the old-time traditions that the Vermillion is known for. We hope to, that be highly representative, the architecture, to be highly representative of some of the old-time structures in downtown Brownsville. And we take great pride in the fact that we're not the new kid on the block. We've been here a long, long time. And we want, with your kind permission and judgment, to be here a lot longer time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. If I may be allowed to inject a little bit of levity into this evening so that we're not all stressed and tense out. You call this a family restaurant. I would venture to guess that many families got their start at the Vermillion, if you know what I mean.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, I see what you mean, yes.
All right. Mr. Knowles?
Thank you, I'm Stent, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner.
Kind of make sure everybody stays nice and calm tonight, okay?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, I want to say I'm the architect for this project, and I'm really satisfied that we've been able to come up with a good client who really wants to serve Brownsville, come up with a good quality project. He's gone above and beyond. I've had the fortunate, fortune, good fortune to work with some good clients in this town. There's some clients that I won't work with specifically because they don't bring a good project to the city. This is one of those very good projects. We were complimented very much in the fact that more than half of the Planning and Zoning Committee actually complimented the design of the project. That doesn't happen on a regular basis. Beyond that, we do look for it to be neighborhood-friendly. We actually, the developer went beyond what he would be responsibly asked to do and dropped many of what we would consider objectionable uses that are still in this C1 application, so that they wouldn't be in a neighborhood setting. So it actually complements the neighborhood even further. We want to provide, in the lease space adjoining, services that would be needed by the neighborhood. Not necessarily by the entire town, but again, servicing the immediate neighborhood. So we've had a good fortune of coming up with a real good plan that adjacent to another commercial project works very well for the community.
Mr. Knowles, let me ask you a quick question. The distance from this location in regards to the Lakeway neighborhood, how far is that?
Ben, how far was it that, it's good, half a mile or more?
The distance from this location to the Lakeway subdivision in Briarwood?
About three-fourths of a mile, about four miles.
Okay, between a half and three-quarter of miles, okay. Also, did you, or Mr. Davidson, as I understand it, were there some meetings that took place between you and several of the residents that have concerns and/or objections to address some of these issues from a compromise standpoint?
We met with the residents, we actually met with them here last week, went over very many of the ideas that they had concerns about. Dan Davidson did step up to the bar and met all of their considerations except for the one item, which is the serving no liquor. So architecturally and site planning-wise, as an example, we, our initial application we turned in was above and beyond the landscape requirements of the city. It's above and beyond parking requirements, and as we said, we reflected on the history of Brownsville. And again, we bring to Brownsville, continue the relationship of Vermillion with the City of Brownsville. The, in that negotiation, we actually raised the bar even further by adding an eight-foot privacy fence, by adding more landscaping in the perimeter, actually looking to take as many of the mesquite trees that are on-site as they are now, actually, we're gonna employ the city tree spade for at least three or four days and move as many and save as many of those mesquite trees on-site as we can. So we did, and again, I compliment him for going to that, stepping up to the bar and saying, we do want a quality project and a quality neighborhood.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this issue? Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, how are you? My name's Buddy Fisher. I've lived in Brownsville 32 years, and 16 of those years I've lived in Lakeway subdivision. When I first moved to Lakeway, Alton Glor Boulevard was Tejon Road, and it was two-lane. The challenges that you had were dodging the southbound traffic to try to get on in the morning and dodging the northbound traffic if you were going to Harlingen, because there was no overpass. Now we have an overpass, and we have congestion. And that congestion was brought upon by Walmart, Sam's, and other explosive businesses out there, as well as a elementary school right around the corner from Lakeway, which causes traffic to really back up in the morning. It has nothing to do with the Vermillion or the Vermillion Village. And the traffic that you're talking about him generating is negligible. Let me tell you this, I think that Dan Davidson is a good businessman. I think that his restaurant out there will be an asset to North Brownsville. And as a Lakeway resident, I, my family, and most of my friends support it. And we would like for you to reconsider and consider this in your deliberations tonight. And we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. You look familiar.
My name is Tracy Wickett, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Commissioners. And I've been a resident of Lakeway with my husband, Rick, for 22 years. I think we're one of the, one of the longest residence families in the entire neighborhood. Although that, you know, there's bound to be somebody that'll come later that's been there 25, 26 years, but we've been there 22 years. And again, we've seen a lot of change. I was part of the group that originally formed the Lakeway Neighborhood Organization, and that's been a really effective group in coming before the City Commission to inform and advocate about issues affecting our neighborhood. It allowed our neighbors to speak with one voice, and it's been a very effective tool. But this is the first time in our history, in our neighborhood, that we have not spoken with one voice about an issue. We're very clearly divided on this issue. I don't think it's gonna rip our neighborhood apart, but it's important that you know that we're not all on one side of this issue. There are 48 families who went so far as to mail a letter to Dan Davidson saying, we're in favor of what you're doing. Families that range from elderly single women to young parents with lots of children. So we're all over the map on this issue, please take that into consideration. I will tell you that I am in favor of granting Mr. Davidson's request for change. I know him personally, and I know him professionally, and I respect and admire the way he runs his business. Not the least important factor to me is that Mr. Davidson has the only restaurant in town that runs a United Way campaign. And I think that speaks to what kind of corporate citizenship he employs when he runs his business. You have to do what's best for the city, and I want to keep it short and just remind you that what's best for the city may not necessarily please everyone who lives in the affected neighborhoods. But for 48 families just in Lakeway, not to mention Briarwood and Hidden Meadows, who sent in a letter, we would be most pleased to have Mr. Davidson as our neighbor, and we hope that you'll give him a chance to bring his neighborliness to our neck of the woods as he does to central Brownsville. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm Albert Pettis, I'm a local businessperson in this community. And as a local businessperson in this community, I truly understand the competition that we have, because no longer is competition, just a Brownsville competition, a Valley competition, not even a state or within the United States. We all know that it's an international competition. With all these mergers, consolidations, all these forced buyouts, franchises, it's very, very difficult. Well, today, we have the opportunity to hear the story of truly a David and Goliath. We have Dan Davidson, the owner of the Vermillion, the V. Been in existence since 1934, and this just doesn't happen, ladies and gentlemen. This happens because they have something unique to offer to our community. What they offer, as Dan was saying earlier, and as you'll hear over and over, it is a family restaurant. It is a place where you can take your mother, you can take your father, you can take your children, you can take your family. It is a place, when you walk in the door, you get a hello from James, the cashier, or Mary Lou, or George, or Esther, or many, many countless other waitresses and waitresses there that will serve you. They don't just serve you, they know you by name, and they gladly seat you. I ask y'all, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet, but this is much more than just a restaurant. You've heard the numbers about the beer and wine sales, the percentages and all that. And I know this is gonna be a very difficult, because there's always two sides to every story. But I am here to tell today that I am, and so is my family, in favor of this new restaurant. Thank y'all, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Pettis.
Good evening, my name is Mike Gonzalez, and I'm a resident of Lakeway. I've been there for 14 years. And I come today before you in support of the Vermillion and Mr. Davidson's plans. You know, you're gonna hear all kinds of things from the other side saying that there's master plan problems, you know. This, in my opinion, is a not-in-my-backyard problem. But I ask you to look at that map and wonder, you know, how far does my backyard extend? We're not even that close to the proposed site. And I just think there's a point where you all have to, you know, say, well, maybe I can protest something up, going up on 1847, because that's on Alton Glor. And the point I wanted to make mainly is that I'm here to tell you that at Lakeway, we don't have a secret handshake or this club, you know, and it hasn't divided, you know, my part, my life at all. We get together whenever, you know, we feel the like ways. On this one, it's very simple. Dan has been a wonderful part of this community for many, many years, and the Vermillion has been an institution. I can't tell you how many tourists come into town and say, I had a wonderful time at the Vermillion, and I'm coming back, and they all like the poncho villa plate.
Jimmy Carter?
So basically, I wanted to tell you that I'm part of many people at Lakeway that are in support of Mr. Davidson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Next?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners?
Good evening.
My name is John Beck, and I've lived in Lakeway since 1982. At that time, we were out in the country, and we were not in the city limits. It's been a residential area. We were annexed in 1995, and you people promised that we'd have police protection, which we do. You fixed the streets, we have the streetlights working. But you also implied that we'd always be a residential area. Now, and if we allow any business in, it's gonna do away with the residential area. It doesn't matter if it's a restaurant, an automobile garage, or anything else. We want to stay residential. I have a wide area, well, during another time when we were here, about some apartments. But I have a wide area planning document that I received, and it states on building heights, lot size, and other requirements in order to promote and protect the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the people. And that's what we're looking at. The Planning Commission, according to Mrs. Foster's letter, I don't know if you got that?
Could you put the mic closer to your mouth? There you go. Thank you.
The Planning Commission, according to Mrs. Foster's letter, spoke of the inevitability of commercialization of Alton Glor. I do not believe that this can happen, because most of Alton Glor is already residential. And let me just point out this on some satellite photos. Do you have that? Okay. Okay. This is a picture. Satellite picture. Lakeway is in the upper-left-hand side, Briarwick is on the lower side, and Hidden Meadows is there. There's only a few places where we can go commercial, or where you could go commercial if you zoned it that way. Oh, yeah, thank you very much. Okay. This area right here, it's where they want to build a restaurant. There's an area here that is open, and there's an area here that is open. And just to show you how much further. When the Planning Commission said it's inevitable, it's still upside down. Yeah, that's good right there. Okay, and this is another enlarged satellite picture. Again, you want me to press it? Okay, this is where the railroad track is. This is where they want to build. Lakeway, residential, Briarwick, residential. All this is residential. This open land right here, do you know who owns that? U.S. government. And there's another little piece of land right here. You know who owns that?
I don't know.
City of Brownsville.
Yeah, I look familiar.
So, none of that's going to be developed commercial. All the rest of this area, as you can see, right there, is all residential. And there's about a, probably about a hundred or two-hundred-foot setback right along the front here, where they have put in a daycare center, a Sitco station, a tortilla factory, and some other things. Now, I have some pictures that I took today, and I'd like to show them. This is Alton Glor Boulevard, and you can see right there, that's their sign where they want to build. It is a two-lane road. It has a bike path on each side, and can you put the next one up, please? And this is what it looks like looking down Alton Glor. Bike path, one lane going east, one lane going west, a little center stripe. And right here is where their outlet, their entrance for the restaurant will be, and that is the house right next to it. It's like I say, we don't want any kind of commercial enterprise in there, a restaurant or anything else. Now, can you show the next picture, please? This is a house right across, just about across from where they're going to build. No fence, and it'd be a very serious hazard, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, and the next one. This is a house, so the resident with their fence right here, and this is where the restaurant will be.
Do you know who owns that house?
Pardon?
Do you know who owns that house you just pointed out?
The Escobedo's.
Is that yours, Mr. Reeves? I'm sorry?
They're in the roofing contract.
Oh, it's not your home?
The Escobedo's. The Escobedo family, the roofers.
Are they here? Okay.
It is a street into a subdivision, and that street right there will be in line with the entrance to the restaurant. This is a piece of property further on down the road, and it's one of those areas that's still open. And this backs up to Mrs. Foster's property. You can see the houses that are right in front of this property. So, if this would go commercial, that whole area would be affected. And this is behind Briarwick, this one right here. This is just a sign from the Wildlife Refuge. And then, this is the frontage for the Wildlife Refuge. So, you see, as far as any more rezoning, this area is predominantly a residential area, and we hope it to stay that way. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Roberto Ruiz. I happen to be adjacent in order to Mr. Davidson's property. My property is the L-shaped property to the left. Can I have the pointer up there? Right there, that's my property right here. I think the issue at hand that I'd like to bring up in a short period of time here is the issue that I think Mr. Edward Camarillo and I think the city commission are addressing at this point, and that is the northwest master plan, the land use study. I think I commend the city in trying to get that going, because the lack of that is really what's causing this as a division. I think that everything that has been voted on so far, as far as planning and zoning, and also the planning department, and whatever you decide to do today, is really without merit, because my point is there is no plan of action. Up until the time that the master plan gets implemented, is that's when we have a direction. And I think the majority of the people that are here have that concern. They don't know which direction. When we first built out there, everybody said it was going to be residential, which it normally is. I think the change that is taking place right now is a change, obviously for the positive. I commend Mr. Davidson, by the way. I've met with him. He is doing a fine job, I think, in what he is trying to do. But again, it is really affecting the community and affecting me directly. A thing that I'd like to also bring or to point out is the possibility that this commission will accept, and I guess depending on how you vote, is providing a moratorium in the immediate area. And this is a concern that we have, because we don't know what's going to be affected with the rest of the development of the land that is over to the left of this area. There's still open land available that could be turned into commercial, and that is really the hesitancy of a lot of the homeowners in this area, that we don't know what's going to happen. I think consideration of this master plan, once it's finalized, it will control or dictate the direction that the city wants to go in. I'd also like to maybe establish if this goes through a level of construction of caliber of what Mr. Davidson is proposing, if this goes into this mode. He is providing, I think, a fine-quality project, but, you know, if this development goes into other areas, we need to establish a character of the development of this area. And I think that's something that we need to keep in hand.
You mean like some kind of an overlay district with certain guidelines?
That could be possible, Mayor. I think, you know, the thing that we don't want to have is obviously a commercial development that's going to change the neighborhood. The neighborhood has to, you know, be kept the same in a residential tone. He is abiding by certain restrictions that we impose, like the eight-foot-high fence, some of the sloping roofs that, you know, he is doing. But I think we are going to put something in effect to settle up and keep the rest of the neighborhood, you know, intact, or at least appeased, is to have some sort of restrictions imposed on anybody coming in. And I'm not talking about the entire northwest area. I'm not talking about the entire length of Alton Glor Boulevard. We are talking about the area of concern. And again, the subject to us looking at that, I happen to be part of this, you know, the land use committee. I hope that we can continue working in that direction, and hopefully to a positive end, and make sure that everybody feels comfortable. But I think, you know, the majority of the people here feel unsure in terms of what is going to happen to the rest of the land, traffic, the liquor, and those issues that need to be brought up. But I think my concern is really the need to implement this master plan. I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Umberto de la Vega. I'm a family physician. I've been living in Brownsville for four years. This city has been great to me. Approximately two and a half years ago, I decided to buy a home here, and I, when I was looking for my house, one of the, few of the criterias that I gave to my real estate agent was that the house would be in a residential neighborhood, and that the surrounding land would be developed as residential neighborhoods, not commercial. And I found that in Briarwick. I also would have to, like to have a house that was close to both of the hospitals, because at times I have to go during the nighttime for work. It really worries me that this rezoning is taking place, and also the fact that they are planning to sell alcohol there. I would hate to be hit by a drunk driver when I'm coming back from my work from helping other people. Also, it seems to me that these planning and zoning commissioners have never driven by this area at eight o'clock in the morning or five o'clock in the afternoon, when we have to go back and forth to home, because they were saying that it's inevitable that this become commercial. But they have the power to say what goes commercial and what doesn't. This is all I have to say, and I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. de la Vega.
Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Eladi Cuellar. I live right on Alton Glor. As you can see, that's my house right there. It would be right at the entrance of Hidden Meadows in Alton Glor. We have a very nice neighborhood right now, as it is. And we really will hate to have a neighborhood bar, because even though it's Vermillion, it's nice, don't get me wrong, but we've got, if you want to go drink a beer, everybody drives to Vermillion. I mean, we don't want to have a bar in a neighborhood. Even if we don't go to Vermillion, we go to Chili's, everything is about thirty-five minutes away. Okay? One of the concerns that we have on the neighborhood is, of course, is the traffic. We have gone through it with Mr. Davis. We sit down on last meeting on last Tuesday, and he's doing a wonderful job, but our concern is somebody getting drunk, getting out of there. Of course, he's always on top of everything there. But when he's not there, what's going to happen? So, a drunk driver can get into my backyard really easy. There's been accidents in there because of, you know, the high traffic that we have in the afternoons. So, we can, you know, reconsider this vote, to go against it, because it's going to affect the neighborhood.
We don't want just to mention that the people who are going to be driving into our area are going to be hardly.
I'm sorry, your name, are you Mrs.?
I'm Mrs. Cuellar. I'm sorry, I'm Terry. We know that the majority of the people are going to be drinking and driving, coming out of there, or, I mean, partly cloudy, you know, coming out of that area. But we're not saying that only those people that have drank at the Vermillion will be coming out of and running into our house that is there. Our concern is also that the people who are getting out of the area or the parking lot out of Vermillion will not make the turn or go straight into our house. Our two daughters sleep in that back window that is on the second palm tree going into our neighborhood. The ages are ten and three. We're afraid that one of these afternoons or evenings, someone might run into the wall and practically go into their bedrooms. If Vermillion does come to our neighborhood, we won't be able to send them to their room, you know, to go to sleep. We will have to make some arrangements for them to be moved to another room. Even if a traffic light comes or Texas DOT decides to give them one entrance or two entrances, we're still going to be right in front of their entrance and going in and going out to the Vermillion. That's our greatest concern, that one day, one car can miss. It doesn't have to be that these people are going to be under the influence of alcohol, but just totally try to make a fast exit and missed and go straight into our property. That is our greatest concern. Thank you.
Let me quickly ask you, in relation to your house, the proposed site is, as we look at it, to the, to your rear, right? To the rear of that picture?
Yes, sir.
And is, you seem to have like a brick fence in front and on the side?
Yes. It's a partial block.
Your front door is not facing Alton Glor, it's facing?
No, sir.
Is that Tandy? What street is that?
That street where the white truck is, that's Hidden Meadows.
I'm sorry, you're across the street.
Across the street, sir.
Okay, so you're not next door to the site?
No.
You're across the street.
I'm across the street.
Okay, and how long have you lived there?
I've lived there ten years.
Ten years, okay.
Even if the Texas DOT decides to put one entrance or let Mr. Davidson with two entrances, we're still going to have a view to their parking entrance or exit, whichever they decide.
Okay, but you're across the street.
Across, exactly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Cuellar. Anyone else?
Good evenings, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm John Glor, Glor Development Corporation, and a few other things. Thanks for the stoplight, by the way, guys. I appreciate that. We, Glor Development, throughout the years with other subdivisions, oh, we have restrictions, and we try to get some sort of a community or representative that will protect the neighborhood, like Mrs. King here. God bless her, man. I appreciate that the most, so. That's the kind of thing we need, is people like them taking care of this. I was, we own a few, yeah, the two, well, there's on the right there, bottom right, there's several or a couple of houses there that we own. So, we're supporting this, by the way. When you were talking about this, up on Alton Glor on the east side, there's a Taco Ray right there on Alton Glor. I went and saw where this property is, and I took a compass and went all the way to the very end of Lakeway and put a circle around it. Put over here on Taco Ray, there's a couple of commissioners and a mayor that's in that circle. And I went over here to the Wild Bill's wings and everything. That same area you're talking about, Loma del Rey, a good chunk of the Brownsville Country Club. You go look at part of Hidden Valley, that same circle that you're talking about up here. There's several of them. Even the old, the existing Vermillion, that's all of, are a good chunk of Robbins Lane. That's how far this is, folks. I'm in favor of the Vermillion. I appreciate what they're doing here, but that's a long, long distance. I'm going to give this for y'all to do and take a look at it. There's a lot of residential that's right in the middle. Look at nineteen or two thousand and six. Look at this in about two thousand and ten. There'll be commercial all up and down Alton Glor. There's going to be some houses that'll be changed into banks and all sorts of stuff. So, I think it's going to be commercial, no matter. Traffic, that's up to y'all. Liquor, that's up to you guys. But other than that, it's to y'all to decide whether or not they'll be commercial. I think it's going to be commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glor. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is David Lopez, and I commend those people from Lakeway, Mr. Glor, for saying, "Hey, we go for it." They don't live there. Those are the people that are in Briarwick or Lakeway, they're not going to have it in their backyard. I commend them for that, because they are not going to be greatly affected. I'm going to have it in my backyard. Okay? We have children as well as the Cuellar's, okay? We have elementary children and junior high.
Where do you live, sir?
I live at ten-twelve Squaw Valley.
And?
It's going to be right behind my house, right across the street. Okay?
You live in Hidden Meadows also?
In the Hidden Meadows subdivision. Okay? I'm sorry?
It's across the street.
Across the street.
When I spoke to you, you told me that it was in your backyard.
It's in my backyard.
This is across from you on Alton Glor, correct?
That's correct.
Now, you are on the other side of Alton Glor. When I spoke to you, you told me that this was in, immediately in your backyard.
Would you consider what to be your?
No, when you spoke to me, when you spoke to me.
It's in my backyard.
David, it's across the road from you.
Just the street across. Just the street across.
All right. We'll let him finish, Commissioner.
When the car is driving right through the back of my house, when my children are playing in the backyard, we're going to say, "Oops, it was only across the street." No. You all are not going to be affected in any way by this, because you don't live there. And I understand that. But there are school buses that go in through our neighborhoods, okay, from seven in the morning, six in the morning, and up to last night, when I was out in the neighborhood, there was a school bus going through there at seven-thirty last night. We are. We are thinking right here, hey, it's a great idea to put a wet restaurant in a neighborhood. Are we thinking about our children here? Or are we thinking about, handle the location to go have a great time? There are a lot of business areas right now that are being developed. Why didn't Mr. Davidson look at that? Why did he look into a residential area? Why? Are we going to be always having to be worried about a car dragging into our backyards? Because this Commission decided, yeah, it's a great idea, but it does not affect you in one bit. It affects us, it affects our children. When my child gets hit by a car, am I going to be able to come back to you all and say, hey, this is what you all decided on? Y'all are probably going to be gone after the next election. But who's to worry, right?
Hope not.
We hope not.
I guess we know where you-
We are your supporters, we supported you, and now we want your support as well. Thank you.
My name is, guess what? Judy King, and I live in Lakeway, okay? But this is not about Lakeway. It is about those people whose daily quality of life, 20, not 24/7, but seven days a week. Mr. Glor?
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me? Excuse me?
I want to make sure I had-
Oh, you have my attention, I'm just discussing something with the Commissioner, thank you.
Ms. King, if you could speak into the mic, please.
It is the quality of life of those people who live in the area colored yellow, okay? Yes, I am here to represent the people who signed the petition which I gave to the Planning Department. And we heard at the Planning and Zoning meeting that this was inevitable. Commercial there was inevitable. But you know what? It wasn't inevitable on Boca Chica, between Correa and Old Alice. It wasn't inevitable on 802 for about a nine tenths of a mile stretch. They do have two churches, and on Boca Chica, they have two churches, but they do not have commercial. So, what makes us different? Now, you've all seen this letter in the pocket, so bear with me, because not everyone in the audience has heard it. I'll make it brief, and it is to the point. The point of what this is about. This is not about who knows who, it's not about friendships, it's not about personalities. It is about a permanent change to the current zoning map as approved by the City Commission of Brownsville. It is about development that would not be compatible with the surrounding area. It is about the vision for this neighborhood, it is about the future of this neighborhood, it is about zoning. We are not opposed to progress. Yes, there should be businesses in various parts of Brownsville to keep up with the increasing population, but in this part of the city, the businesses should be as close as possible to the expressway and never west of the railroad tracks. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Hernandez, and I'm here to oppose the Vermillion. This is why. My nephew, his name is Justin Robertson. We live in the Hidden Meadows. Everybody seems to be saying Lakeway. Lakeway is on the top and it is away from where the proposed site is, but we are the ones that are right there. These kids are the ones that are there, okay? So it's because of these kids that we need for you to really think about it. There are a lot of other places in the city that need to have business coming up, but the way it is right now, there's a lot of empty buildings that could be used, where businesses can come up. You know, it's a good thing that UTB bought Amigoland Mall, it's being used for something. There's the Albertsons that could be used for other things. We don't need another shopping center close to our homes. When we moved there, it was a family residential neighborhood, and that's what we expected it to be for a long time. It was close to the hospitals, and on the other side, close to the mall. But the main concern was the children, like my nephew right here. So please consider and vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Robert Sodanya. I go by Charlie. I'm an employee at the Vermillion, been there for nearly three years now. Half of the people that spoke today, I've known because of the Vermillion. I know their names, I know their family. Sometimes I sit down and even joke with them. So we ask, when Mr. Davidson says we are a family restaurant, we are a family restaurant. Even some of you I've seen there from time to time. I know the people across the street in Hidden Meadows, they're concerned about drunk drivers, drinking and driving. At the Vermillion, I've learned from Mr. Davidson, my manager, Mr. George Perez, Mary Lou, that it's a very, it's a very big thing, drinking and driving, underage drinking and everything, how much people have to drink. And sometimes, every once in a while, some people get out of hand, they drink too much. We stop them. I've had to make people stop, they didn't like it. I've had my, I've seen my manager walk out people, and he had to call the cab for them to get them home safely. Or we had one of their friends take them home. Every once in a while, you see a car at the Vermillion at 8:00 in the morning, because it was left overnight, because that person wasn't able to drink, but we found him a, I mean, the person had a little bit too much drink, wasn't able to drive home, we found him an alternate ride way home. And I know this is, like they say, in their backyard, right across the street, but if you look at Brownsville Country Club, right in their backyard, actually right up against the street, right up against the fence is Dutti's Bar. Benigan's down the street, that's a restaurant, actually, it's a restaurant and bar as well. It's not family owned, it's a commercial. I've known about 10 different managers there. At the Vermillion, I've known three different managers and two owners that have been there since I've been there. So when we say we look out for the people that go there, we mean it. Thank you.
Thank you, Buck.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Gina Levy, and I live in Lakeway subdivision. One thing I want to start with is just to tell you, I've been living there for five years, and one of the things I like about the subdivision is that I can take my son out for walks, and we can still see cardinals, and we can see birds, and there's, I guess, oh, refuge that's going to be built there. It's a very natural, beautiful area as far as flowers and birds, and it's a residential zoned area. I don't understand why, if Mr. Davidson has had such a successful year, 2 million excess in sales in a great month, why he can't choose to build this on commercial property. I don't understand why there is no city plan that can guarantee that an area that is zoned as residential stays residential. And when he says that there's a representative few, there's 80% of us that sign that petition, and we are your voters. And we want to know that there is some checks and balances to what is going to be happening in the city as far as development is concerned, and that there should be a master plan in order that says, that designates what areas are residential, what are business, and why he needs to build in a residential area. So please consider this when you make your vote. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Jesse JD de la Rosa. Only I come to, because I live in a Hidden Meadows too place, and I want to explain something, you know? In my position, I don't like, you know, the restaurant over there or liquor or whatever, because I got a family. I work, I wake up at 6:00 in the morning to go work, and sometimes a train is passing over there, there's a lot of traffic, and you know, if the restaurant, there's maiden there, there's more traffic, more accidents, and I think if I want to take my family outside of my house to cook up something on Saturday or Sunday, I think it's, I worry about it, you know, I worry. Because I don't know if some people come in drunk and go inside by the, the Hidden Meadows inside by the place, or, I don't know, because if the restaurant is there, a lot of people not from neighborhood or just for another places coming to the restaurant drinking, and you don't know who's the people coming over there, you know? So, in my position, I don't like, you know, they put a restaurant over there. And I'm sorry, because my English is bad, because I go to the second, only to the second place, okay?
Don't worry, Mr. Glor.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, and I think about it, because for the family, because there's a lot of family, and it's quiet over there. And I buy it over there, because when I see the place, it's quiet, I say, okay, I buy in here, but if something coming, you know, like put a business, and I don't know what happened, you know, in the front, okay? Thank you, and I'm sorry for the, you know, for my English, but I want to explain this, because I don't want to, you know?
You expressed yourself quite well, we understood your position.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Mayor, hello, Commissioners. My name is Juan Infante. I live in the subdivision Northwood. I've asked neighbors around there, of course, they're all for it, for having a Vermillion, I'm for it. I do a lot of walking around there. If I, do you have the laser where I use it? Some months back, me and my wife were driving along this road right here, of course, the Alton Glor coming out. On the opposite direction, there was a car coming, it was coming head on towards us. I saw a child walking here. I passed it, around this time, around this spot, I passed, I mean, I was able to swipe the car. This car came in the opposite lane and hit a car that was turning here. The Vermillion's out there. It was during the day, and I could have been there head on. I don't even live here, I live somewhere over here in Northwood subdivision, behind Briarwood. It has nothing to do with beer, it has nothing to do with anything. As a matter of fact, this, I'm sure there's probably a traffic light here, but it's going to help slow the traffic, as a matter of fact. That's one thing I want to mention. The other thing is, last week, I was walking with my son, of course, my wife, my daughter, around this area. I own this property right here, okay? And I'm welcome to work with the liquid community, with anybody else, and even to complement the same, if I'm to develop something on this property, to complement the same style of neighborhood restaurant. And I'm sure anybody else that owns that property around here would also complement and put some type of service. My son, a nine-year-old boy, walking along here, walking along this area, said, this area needs to be developed. Nine years old, and he understood the concept about being developed. Why? Because I'm sure my son wanted to get a scoop of ice cream, maybe go get a subway. With the gas prices being $3, I want to walk here, I want to walk to a restaurant. Hey, I live here, if the Vermillion opens here, he's going to see me go and eat. Instead of going and eating with, and giving my money over to Chili's, to whoever, they might end up closing, like they've closed in McAllen. You know, you have Black Eyed Peas, you have, you know, what check, what is it, they have Black Eyed Peas and they have another restaurant that's closed, you know, franchises that have come and they just close, close up. What happens? I'm for it for, I mean, if this Commission approves this, and of course, I've also heard about a master plan, if something can be developed around, a master plan around this to have a walkable community and walkable services, to service all this community in here, it will benefit. It will benefit big, a lot of our neighborhoods because of the gas, of course, the gas price, and of also children's, whether it's a pay area, or a book reading area, or a coffee shop, or an ice cream shop, laundry. So I'm for it, I'm hoping that you guys will vote for it. I have a lot of family that live in Diamond Point, I have family that lives right on the acre, right there in front of Iturria, they live right there, my sister lives there. I have, I have, I have four nephews that live in Northwood subdivision, I have one nephew that lives right behind the property that I own here in Diamond Point. That property was developed by his father-in-law, you know, and like I said, my sister lives right across Iturria, she was the first one there before all those other acre house, homes started developing there. They're all for it. She owns, she's a businesswoman, she owns a business. I understand how this, I mean, this is, of course, for the benefit of the neighborhood. As long as we keep it, it's the same architecture, make it a walkable community, I would hope that you guys also agree, agree on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Infante. I've been, I think we're almost at about an hour as far as this, how many more people do we have? All right. I want to give everybody an opportunity, I just, we need, we have some other business to take care of also.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Argelia Miller, and I'll be brief, sir. I just want to go ahead and say that if men will say exactly the same thing that I'm going to say today with a tone that I'm going to say it, it will be puro macho. But, because it is a woman with pearls and high heels, probably I would be labeled, you know, I have a label already, no problem. I'm trying to break the-
Oh, I got you, all right, all right.
There, I got you now. Okay, now, see, here, we-
You'd be a tough, a tough woman, right? Okay, I got you.
Okay, now, usually we have three kinds of scenes, and again, I'll be brief. We have the thought, the action, and the omission. If you think about something, if you do it, you know, you're guilty. But if you know something is being wrong, Mr. Longoria, I like your chuckle, if you know something is being wrong, then you know, and you don't do anything about it, then you're guilty as the one that thought about it, the one that did it, and because you didn't stop the person that was doing it and thinking about it.
You said at school, that's what I looked at you.
So, okay, omission, that's my thing. I know that what's going on in here, it affects some people, and all I can say is just going to the needy, greedy. I don't know Mr. Davidson personally, I've never met him, I don't know, Mr. Glor mentioned Esther, or Mary, or Dick, or Jane, or whatever, I've never met him. I'm too busy with the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, I'm busy with the Board of Directors at Child Protective Services, and I'm also a CASA volunteer. So I really don't have time, my hands are full with my kids, which they go to Iturria, they go to Steelman, and they go to Faith Training Academy. So as you can see, my platter is full. Tonight, I believe in absolutes. Absolut is either you are pregnant or you're not. See, that's an absolute, you know, you cannot be wishy-washy here, okay? So then, my question is, do we, as we were elected, do we help our constituents, do we see their concerns, do we go ahead and see what their needs are? You know, not a- You know, not a majority or a minority, because I know that Mr. Davidson said that some people signed his signature. Well, I know some friends of mine's husbands that signed the petition, and of course, now they have sofa duty. So, bringing that, another laughter, so I'll go ahead and make it brief. I know that there's, everybody's going to say that traffic is coming in 2007, that this is coming, you know, it's coming up, you know, it's no problem. But guess who was the one that pressured, that takes that? Mostly the parents sent, or the parents at the PT committee from, you know, different schools, and mostly the people that kind of kept calling, "Take that, take that, take that." If somebody else wants to take the credit, that's fine, too. But the thing is, is just that while they're doing all this renovation and all their construction and stuff, and, you know, things that are going on, we are the ones in and out, we are the ones coming, you know, just doing, you know, we live there, so we have to exit and enter, you know, the same path. And so, in the meantime, even if you just, I ask of all of you, you know, we're not in a war here, you know, who's here, who's there, but just to consider, like, you know, the decisions that we are about to make, you know, just go ahead and, you know, think, you know, don't be hastily about this. I've seen that you sometimes you retable, and retable, and retable. Hey, we can come back to retable this until 2015. And then again, I like your smile, sir. With this one, it's just, I really don't want to make it long, sir. I just want to go ahead and, you know, just have about three more things to go, and that's it. And see, one thing is, Mr. Davidson, I don't have anything against the gentleman. You know, he looks very distinguished gentleman. You know, he's, you know, he's nice. I've never met the gentleman. But I'm trying to figure out, how can a man so smart, and how can anybody make a decision of buying commercial, you know, like buying in the residential zone when it is residential? And how can anybody says, "Oh, future site of the Vermillion," unless it was a done deal? You know, it's just a simple question, right? So, then, I know that it's kind of like not the haves or the have-nots, because, you know, most of the time, that neighborhood, it is semi-divided, and I'll be honest on that one. I used to kind of like drive and say hi to Mr. Mike Salinas. Now, I go the other way. Now, I exit the garage, and he turns around like, "Oh, man, there comes Mrs. Miller." But, you know, again, I just noticed some friends speaking against, you know, or in favor of Mr. Davidson, and he's just like, "Okay, I'm going to cut the United Way thing." But, you know, it's just, it is true, you know, things, and it doesn't have to be that way. So, you know, again, just, you were elected, please think about what's happening, and, you know, don't take it personally. It's just, I'm kind of trying to not to make it stress for anybody, and make it where you understand the position, and vote for whatever the concerns. Yes, we can go ahead and do this, but you made a promise, and you know, what good are your promises? The other thing is, if things are about to happen, fix what is wrong now, and then we move forward. With all that said, I thank you for your time, and I commend you, and I pray for you all, and may God be with you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Miller. I hope you'll keep praying for us even after tonight. All right. Is there anybody else? All right.
Mayor, could I say a word?
Oh, gosh. Okay.
Last one.
I didn't know you had a dog in this fight, but go ahead.
I don't have a dog in this fight. I just have some information that I think would help you to make the decision. I'm Neil Simmons. I'm a developer of El Valle. I just wanted to point out that Marson Road is to be completed from Alton Glor to Publica Cell within three to four years at the outside. And where the railroad is, it's going to be taken up, and there's going to be a west loop there. The traffic in front of these subdivisions that are under consideration is going to be alleviated immensely. And so, I just wanted to point out, I'm not far against what's happening here. I just wanted to let you have something to think about.
Well, thank you. Matter of fact, you just took my points that I was going to make, so I should have made you sit down.
That's one.
You said real quick, right? All right. Your name, please.
My name's Delia Lindberg. I live next to Judy King, if that means anything. But I live at Lakeway is what I'm trying to say. I stood beside a commission here eight and a half years ago with my daughter in my arms, five years old. At that time, we were going through some rezoning, and I've been coming to every rezoning meeting that they've been trying to change our residential area to either commercial, trailers, apartments. The tortillera got away from us. We didn't know that was coming in. That people made a fool out of me one time by selling me barbacoa that was ugly, dirty, and even Channel 4 went to them and tried to close them down. Now, I'm not talking about the tortillera, but I'm talking about my residential area that we bought eight years ago. I stood in here in front of you, a different commissioner, they're not here no more.
Well, maybe he still is.
But, well, true. I don't know if you remember, I had black hair, you know. My little girl was here. My little girl told me, "If Vermillion goes in there, I'm 14 years old, maybe that's where I'll take my first drink." Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else? All right. I have a few comments.
Mayor, we got one more.
Okay, come on.
It's been over an hour.
Yeah, this is going to be the last person.
Good evening. I'm new at this, but I just, I'm here to talk about the Hidden Meadows being just residential. Please consider keeping it residential. There, you know, there's no need for commercials to go in that area anymore. We have plenty of them, and there's plenty of areas in Brownsville that can be considered commercial. Squaw Valley, Hidden Meadows, that area is residential, and when I bought there, that area was, I was told it was always going to be residential. And now, just because somebody wants to have a nice restaurant there, it's going to change everything for our kids in the future. I think that our kids should have a residential area for the future, because I'm going to be gone. But my kids will be in that area, and if that area keeps going in commercial, what's going to happen? They're going to have to move out of the city, or they have to move out, because they are going to be having kids also. And is Brownsville going, growing as fast as it is? Pretty soon, we're not going to have any residential areas, only commercial. This is a big city, I know. But consider commissioners and city commissioners and mayors or whatever, I just want you to understand that once in a while, you have to stop and think of the people. The people that live in the areas, not only the business people. Sometimes, I see you on TV, on your meetings, and I see some times where sometimes it's only gone to the business people. You have no concern sometimes about the people around the area, because you all don't live in the areas that are affected most of the time. So, please, from the bottom of my heart, I'm asking you, think about rezoning from residential to commercial. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. What was your name, ma'am?
Oliver Edlundis.
Thank you, Mr. Edlundis. All right. Clearly, this is an issue that has touched on plenty of nerves in this area. First of all, let me say, regardless of what we do, I, and I think I can speak for the commission, respect each and everybody's right to express their opinion and their position on this very hot topic. Whether we agree or disagree with your particular personal position does not indicate that this commission doesn't care about the people's interest. The fact that you have an interest in this particular issue, we have to take that into account, all right? I do, anytime we make a tough decision, as Ms. Miller said, we're going to upset those because we've decided that somebody was or was not pregnant, and we're going to upset somebody, okay? And I can tell you right now, we're going to upset plenty of you here tonight, I think. That does not mean that we don't care about your concerns. All of you knew, when you moved into that area, that this was a state highway, number one. That highway has been expanded, and as we've heard tonight, it's going to continue to be expanded. Now, the way that Mr. Davidson has presented this particular project, it's not in an area other than being across a state highway that's going to completely abut or address some of the concerns. Now, everybody, this is kind of the opinion of, you know what, I'm in favor of it, but not in quote-unquote "my backyard," okay? If this was a situation where North Brownsville was not developing, that there was nothing going on out there, that this was not a state highway, that there was no access or protection from the residential neighborhoods both next to, behind, and across, I think we'd probably be much more concerned about that. I hate to use the word inevitable, but that's probably not far from the reality of it. And I'm sure I'm going to lose some votes here tonight. That so be it, maybe I'll make a few. That's what happens, okay? That's what happens. And if you, somebody wants to decide you're a good commissioner or mayor because of one issue, or you're bad because of one, that is everybody's opinion, okay? So, it's very easy, if we wanted to, to say, you know what, we're going to do something because there's more people in favor of it, or more people against it. I personally feel that this is a state highway. I think where the city made a mistake is exactly what we're trying to address, the fact that we've not had a master plan in this city forever. We are in the process of getting it passed, maybe not to the timetable of many of you, but the reality of it is, ladies and gentlemen, this is a state highway. The West Rail relocation project, once we get that railroad out of there, is going to alleviate much of the congestion in that area. The developments, the residential developments are going up left and right on northwest Brownsville, not just on the northeast side, okay? We're trying to make sure that there is a good mix, a good compromise, where the residential is taken care of, but at the same time, we address the fact that we have good local businessmen who want to continue to provide a product. The concerns about alcohol being served there, and drunks driving in and out of there, you know, I think it's a bit unfair. I really, really do. Mr. Davidson knows that if he were to have that type of business and that type of issues, he would not stay in business very long. That's not to say that something may not happen, but it doesn't have to be the Vermillion right then and there. It can be somebody coming from somewhere else on another side of town. It could be somebody coming from a party at Lakeway going to another part at Hidden Meadows. Anything can happen. We can't control everything. I guess the last thing I want to say, Ms. Miller, you said, "Don't take it personal" when you were up here? Well, I appreciate that. I'm not taking it personal. I hope you don't take any of my comments personal. I have a responsibility to the entire city, and I respect all of the opinions and views that you raise here today. I think the fact that it's such a hot topic and divided by so many people indicates that this is a very tough decision, so regardless of what we decide, we're going to upset somebody. And I do apologize for those that we upset. I also don't want to hear cheering, one way or the other. This is a very, very tough issue, and you elected us to make tough issues, and like I said, we're going to upset some people tonight, we'll upset some people down the road on other decisions. But that's just the way it has to be. We can't walk away from it because somebody's threatened to go against us in the next election. That happens on a daily basis, by the way. All right. Anybody else need to say anything?
No.
I'd move to close public hearing on seven, eight, and nine.
All right. We have a motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Longoria on items seven, eight, and nine, seconded by Commissioner Sennettles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is an action item.
Mayor, may I, before you vote?
Go ahead, Jim.
Because this is a protested item under Section 211.006D of the Local Government Code, it's required to, it's required to have a three-fourths majority to, because of the protest that's in place. So, to uphold the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission would require the vote of all five members of the City Commission.
All right.
Mayor, I would move to approve items seven, eight, and nine.
We have a motion to approve items seven, eight, and nine.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sennettles. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Aye, Commissioner?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Five-oh. All right. Next item.
Item number 10. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235, 2006-004-8-S to allow a general retail-specific-use specialty retail sales printing shop in a medium retail-use district for Lot 15 of Block 15 of El Valle Grande subdivision, Section 2, near Alton Glor Boulevard and Morrison Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is the lot shaded in red. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve the recommendation to you. The applicant would like to have a printing shop at this location.
This is a public hearing?
So, move to close.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to close, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries action.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Sennettles.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Edlundis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. You just seconded another competitor. That's very nice of Commissioner Edlundis. Very good. Item 11.
Item 11, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235, 2006-009 to rezone from dwelling G classification to medium commercial G classification, 4.83 acres out of Block 21 of El Harding subdivision, near FM 802 between Dana Avenue and Old Port Isabel Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is a property here shaded in red. This is Dana, Old Port Isabel, and 802. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve, I'm sorry, there was one a vote in the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this would be the site of a skating ring.
So, move to close public hearing.
Anyone? All right. Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Sennettles, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries action.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sennettles, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item 12, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235, 2006-010 to rezone from dwelling G classification to general retail G classification, 14.14 acres out of 78.83 acre tract and share 12 of Espirito Santo Grant, near US 281 and Lareda Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is the area shaded in red. You have 281 and Alton Glor Boulevard. This is the location for a home improvement center with different pad sites for different types of businesses, commercial businesses. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this recommendation to you.
This is a public hearing?
There was no opposition.
I'm sorry.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Sennettles, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries action.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sennettles, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item 13, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235, 2006-011 to rezone from dwelling G classification to general retail G classification, 3.357 acres out of Block 23 of Chicago Gardens, near Minnesota Avenue and Paseo Real Drive.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is the area shaded in red. This is Minnesota, the airport's down south here. This is a location for a neighborhood grocery store. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this recommendation to you.
This is a public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Edlundis, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries action.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Roy, seconded by Commissioner Edlundis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 14.
Item 14, public hearing in action to authorize the issuance of a motor cab permit to Mr. Guillermo G. Vazquez on a 1996 Ford Crown Victoria, which will be operating for Checkers Taxi Cab Company.
Mayors of, members of City Commission, good evening. Mr. Guillermo Vazquez filed an application with us for a new motor cab permit to operate a 1996 Ford Crown Victoria. All the requirements under the city taxi ordinance have been met to include the publication in the local newspaper. Staff is recommending approval on this permit. This will not exceed the number of permits that are authorized by the city ordinance, which is at 125. With this, if this permit was approved, it'll put us at 66.
All right. This is a public hearing?
To close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action.
Approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item fifteen, public hearing in action to authorize Mr. Felipe de Jesus Barrera to transfer his motor cab license on a 1997 Ford Crown Victoria from Lerma's Taxi to Redtop Taxi.
Pretty much, Mr. Barrera is requesting a transfer for his motor cab permit, license, and taxi from Lerma's Taxi to Redtop Taxi. He'll be operating the same vehicle, which is a 1997 Ford Crown Victoria.
Close.
This will not increase the number of taxi cab permits.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action.
Approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item sixteen, public hearing in action to authorize Mr. Jose Teran to transfer his chauffeur's license on a 2001 Chevy Venture van from Yellow Cab Taxi to American Taxi Company.
Mr. Teran is just requesting a transfer of his chauffeur's license from Yellow Cab Taxi to American Taxi.
To close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action.
To prove.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item.
Item seventeen, public hearing in action to authorize the issuance of a new motor cab permit to Mr. Jose Teran on a 2001 Chevy Venture van, which will be operating for American Taxi Company.
Mayor, I think we need to table that one because it's basically the same one.
I was going to, yeah, I was going to ask about that. Can you have more than one?
No, no, no. It is the same vehicle, sir.
Appears to be the same thing.
It is the same vehicle.
Motion to table.
I apologize for that.
All right. Motion to table by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, we can't do it in definite one, so we'll do it for the next meeting, and that way we can not, well, you either bring it up or not. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eighteen. Item eighteen, consideration in action on resolution number 2006-022 endorsing the development of the previous Valley Regional Medical Center into a veterans' hospital.
Mayor, I put this on the agenda, hoping that we could get commission support and show the fact that we're all behind this, and I would hope we'd have unanimous vote.
Absolutely. Is that your motion, Commissioner?
That's my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hernandez to support, in favor, seconded by Commissioner Sisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen.
Item number nineteen, consideration in action, if any, with respect to the pending labor negotiations between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Police Officers Association, including all salary, wage, and other matters contained therein.
I tell you, before we get to that real quick, on that last item, I just, for the benefit of the audience watching and in attendance tonight, our plan is to dedicate Veterans Park on Memorial Day, May the 29th. Please keep that date open. We plan on having quite a ceremony and quite some dignitaries coming to visit and join us in that ceremony. All right. Item nineteen. Mr. Navarro.
Mayor, Commissioners, Rick Navarro, I've been serving as the chief negotiator on the city and Police Department Union labor negotiations. This evening, we had an executive session and a closed-session item. I'd like to handle this item in the form of two recommendations by executive management. I'd like to give you a little bit of quick background as to where we are, how we, where we are today, give you the two recommendations, kind of lay them out, and then request a motion on those recommendations. I think that's the most appropriate way to proceed. The recommendations that we are giving to you, first of all, I want to make, remind you that we, the negotiation teams for both the Recognized Police Union, the BPOA, and the city, had brought to you a TAID, that's a tentative agreement document, last December. That document covered all fiscal and operational issues. It had a number of features to it. It was, it was not approved at that time, and so it technically went off the table. The recommendations that, we have had a couple of three meetings since that time, the last one being yesterday with BPOA. The city negotiation team had tendered another proposal, taking into account the commentary that we got at the meeting in December. That proposal was tendered in January. It was rejected. We received a counterproposal yesterday from BPOA. The counterproposal is, we're both working off the same document, that is, the tentative agreement that we had reached in December. And so, today, what I'm going to present, give you a little bit of an outline as to what the BPOA has asked that we present to you, their proposal, which I agreed to do today. Executive management has a recommendation on that proposal, and then we have a subsequent recommendation as well. The BPA proposal is, on the fiscal side, essentially the same proposal that was in December, which is that there was a rank, a first-year rank differential adjustment that was being made, which was going to favor largely the patrol group, the patrol officers, and then followed by a, a second-year step of two percent, a three, a third year of three percent. The, the seniority table was going to be enhanced by dropping it down to six years, to start at six years instead of starting at eight years. And, and that was the fiscal proposal. The other operational item, which was the issue of the commanders at that time, if you recall, and so the modified proposal that we got yesterday is that the commander positions can still be eliminated, but rather than being on a timetable, that they be eliminated by attrition, and that those three slots revert to civil service positions as captain positions as they are, as the current position holders leave. And that has been the subject of much discussion. So, the BPA proposal that was given to us yesterday is basically that. The, the anchor point is the TA document modified in this fashion. The difference in terms of the first year is that they've added an $800 lump sum payment across the board. It's my understanding that that is intended to cover what is considered to be the lost time from last October, December to the present. There's a legal prohibition against retroactive pay under the Texas Constitution, and this is, you know, one tool that negotiation teams use to sort of avoid being, to be in compliance with the constitutional provisions. So, there's an $800 lump sum pay. When we calculate the costs out, I think they come out about the same for the city. I've conferred extensively with Mr. Kavler about it. Our recommendations are that the proposal as tendered yesterday by BPOA be rejected. However, our second recommendation is that, again, using the same TA agreement, working off of that same model, that the commission extend an offer tonight with the following terms, and again, using that TA agreement, that the commander status issue be and remain off the table. No, a status quo on the commanders, that issue not be part of the contract. Commander, three commanders, stay where they are, no changes on that. The first-year rank differential, both the negotiation team and executive management, we recommended it the first time, we recommend it again. We believe the rank differential is an adjustment that basically creates a, another pay scale at the patrol level. Right now, you have Patrol One through Patrol Four, takes roughly five years to move through those. There's little bumps in, in pay at those levels. We would now have a probationary level, and then a one through four, and there would be a pay increase at each one of those levels. The first year, that's what we're calling the rank differential proposal, the first year, this is probably the, the most expensive component of the proposal that we're asking for you to approve as an offer, and, and it tends to put most of the dollars at the patrol level. We do not recommend the $800 lump sum, and so the first year, we do not recommend the seniority chart, the seniority enhancement. The seniority table is a feature that was inserted into the document at the last round of negotiations when Mr. Lambert was the city manager. That starts at eight years. We recommend that you leave that, again, status quo. The second-year offer would be a $1,200 annual supplement, as opposed to a percentage. When you convert it to a percentage, it comes out to a little more than the two percent. But the recommendation that it be an annual supplement per officer amortized over the course of the year is that, and in the third year, by the way, it's 1,500. And the reason it's being recommended in that format is to allow the commission to get control of the aging cost of the contract. If you continue to add percentages, then you're rolling in those figures into it, and the aging cost of the contract was significantly enhanced at the last cycle. By doing this supplement, you're able to put some dollars there, but you're not designing an aging feature or into the contract more than what it is. We're not going, can't go back on that, but you can kind of control the growth.
What numbers are you looking at in three years?
Well, let me ask this quick question. On that, on that supplement you're talking about, at the end of that timeframe, the three years, it would remain at whatever level it's reached at the end of those three?
Correct.
It would not go back to what it was before, those three years?
Not go back to what it is now.
Okay.
It would have a stay clause where if the contract remains green, it goes into an evergreen phase, in other words, there's negotiations in the next cycle, the 1,500 just repeats until there's a new deal, until there's a new agreement. So, there's no backsliding on that. But again, it's in the form of an annual supplement pay, and it does not add to the aging cost. I will, would like to point out that it, that pay by federal law would be rolled into the overtime rate that is paid on any overtime that is paid, okay? Because it is a pay. So, it would, it would, that we can't do anything about. But yes, Mayor, to answer your question, there's no, it would, the 1,500 would simply repeat in the absence of a new negotiated agreement. The sick leave payout is my underst-
Ray, did you answer my question?
I'm sorry, sir. What?
You had them at a 1,200 first year?
1,200 the second year.
1,200 second year.
And 1,500 the third year.
Third year.
Is that a two and three percent? Is that a two and three?
It's a little bit more than two and three, if you calc, if you convert, if you convert it, but the two and, it avoids the aging component. It's roughly equivalent, a little bit, a little bit more.
Okay.
Okay? And so, the design of it is what is important to the executive management team. The total, let me finish with the other terms here so I can kind of stay on track. The sick leave payout had been TA'd. It's currently 160 days sick leave payout. It had been TA'd at 240. It's my understanding there's some concerns in that, so that we are recommending that that component, again, stay the same. I need to make clear that the recommendation is, and the request for a motion to extend the offer along these terms, is that in accordance with law, that it be prospective only, that it, if accepted at some point by the BPOA membership, that it be implemented the first full pay period upon approval. And I would also recommend that in the motion that the term have, that the offer that is extended here by the commission have a lapse date, which we, we recommend May 1, 2006, that's a Monday, that would give adequate time for, you know, any further discussions. But we recommend that you put that, that you formally reject the offer tendered yesterday, that you, rather than leave things there, extend the counteroffer on these terms, and, 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 and convey that to, to the union and the membership.
Mr. Kavler? What are your thoughts?
Mayor, we're, we're in agreement with the, I am in agreement with the, with the second recommendation, or our recommendation. I feel that this is a generous offer to the Police Officers Association and the officers from the city, very much so deserving. It's approximately $1.7 million out of our budget, and we no longer want to discuss the issues of the commanders and their elimination or their nutrition, by nutrition or immediately. We want to, we want to get back to the status quo, the police department as far as its chain of command. We want that issue immediately resolved, and we request that this offer be presented to the Officers Association by their, by their elected membership for, for consideration, and with the May 1 deadline.
All right. Maybe next time, we don't have to have such, so many contentious issues in one meeting because clearly, we're going to upset some people here tonight, again, in another, in another issue. However, I think, as presented, this is a, it's a fair offer, and, and let me say this, any amount of money, and I've said this before and I'll repeat it, any amount of money that's paid to our police, our fire and emergency, from a value standpoint, will never be enough. But the reality of it is, is that the city has budgetary restraints and fiscal constraints that we have to address in order to provide all of the services that our citizens expect from us. Public safety, Mr. Kavler, at this point eats or uses up around almost 60% of our budget. Is that right?
Approximately, a little over 58% of our general fund budget goes to our law enforcement or public safety.
To public safety. So, it would be wrong for anybody to say that the city does not spend the majority of its funds on public safety, which obviously includes police, fire, and emergency. We would hope that the, that the membership would take into account all of the issues surrounding this contract and the, the standpoint of the City Commission with regards to this. Again, we're not going to make everybody happy. We may not even make a lot of you happy, but we need to follow the recommendation of our management, and I personally think that this is a, it's a good and fair offer, and I hope that it's approved by the, the membership. The majority of the money on this particular one is being spent at the patrol, patrolman level, right?
The first year, which is the big, bigger cost, about $850,000.
What was the jump going to be?
With the creation of the probationary position, the starting pay at the probationary will stay at what it is now, 28,131. The Patrol One will jump from 28,131 to 36,388. Patrol Two jumps from 35 to 39. Patrol Three jumps from 39 to 43. Patrol Four jumps from 43 to 45. The numbers kind of go down from there. It does continue all the way through to lieutenant. Commanders are not incorporated in this.
No.
And, and so, the, the bulk of the dollars will fall at the patrol, you have one patrol rank, but you have different steps.
Different steps, right. On the issue of the commanders, let me just say that I was offering or suggesting a compromise where the chief would have, continue to have two appointed commanders and one that would be available through merit, but as explained to me, it, it really wouldn't be able to be done on a, on a practical basis. So, that, that so-called compromise to allow a merit or testing really didn't fit as to how the system isn't placed right now. So, that's why I, I think, decided to keep the status quo with regards to the commanders. What are, any comments by the commission? You gotta let me hang out here by myself. All right.
I mean, I just, when I see the jump from, we've discussed this, and I see the jump from, from a probationary officer, from 26,000, from 28,000, to patrolman one at 36,000. For Brownsville standards, that's, that's a $7,500 raise. That's a pretty good raise from one year to the next.
It is, sir, and, but, you know, one of the touchstones that we're looking at in this is kind of looking at the market in the area, and, and the rank differential was also to allow us to have a little bit of a spread there throughout the entire organizational structure, and that's just kind of how the numbers at that level worked out. We're supporting it because we believe that it provides, that first year that a police officer comes in, that's a probationary year, they have very few rights, but it's a very good incentive to get through that year. We also believe that it will be an enhancement to draw a very qualified pool of applicants for the City of Brownsville, and, and so, yes, it is, but the, the amounts that the ranked differential ends up with- ranked differential ends up with is, is, is good, but it meets market, and we need to meet, we need to be meeting market, so.
Gentlemen, I would ask you to consider, especially with, when it came to the sick leave, when you're jumping from 160 days to 240.
240.
240 days. Let's be reasonable, okay? 160 to 240, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big jump from one contract to the next. You went up 10 days on the last contract, now we're going up a whole other, so please consider that. And when it came to the $800, my only comment on that was, you know, who's to say that we dragged out negotiations, or you might have dragged out negotiations? That's something we need to consider. Hold on, Sam.
We, we would recommend, executive management recommends either one, two motions, one motion rejecting the offer, and then a second motion extending the offer as stated. I guess you can roll it into one motion if?
Well, let's go ahead and do it, two separate ones. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to reject, first.
We have a motion to reject by Commissioner Arroyo. Second by Commissioner Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, action.
Second item, we move to?
Extend an offer.
Extend the offer, right, thank you.
Motion to extend an offer by Commissioner Arroyo. Seconded by Commissioner Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Next item.
Item 20, consideration in action to award a contract for the 31st Community Development Block Grant, street paving and drainage for Camelia Drive and Santiago Lane.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, at the request of our Planning and Community Development Director Ben Medina and our Engineering Director Carlos Lostra, the Purchasing Department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. Bids were opened on the project on March 15th. A total of three bids were received and tabulated by the Project Consulting Engineer, and our recommendation to you this evening is to go with the low responsible bidder. There's nothing remarkable to report to you about the bids. The bid amount is $332,222.22. The streets that will be, we worked on this project, I believe our Camelia Drive is indicated on the screen and Santiago Lane. This is not one of our major street projects, but it is an important one.
But it is a very needed one.
All right, this is an action item.
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Leguia, seconded by Commissioner Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item 21, consideration in action to award a contract for the sale of a 54.170 acre tract of surplus city real property located on north, on the north side of FM 511, about 8/10 mile east of Old Alice Road, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Mayor, Commissioners, Purchasing Department solicited formal sealed bids for this project. As you know, the methodology that we are governed by for disposing of surplus property is either through public auction or sealed bid. It's our, been our policy in the past to use the sealed bid methodology, which we did in this case. It's also important to note to you that we went through an appraisal process on this piece of land to determine the fair market value. The appraisal was returned with a value of $540,000. Our department received two bids on March 1st for this project. Of the two bids received, we tabulated them and we made a determination that the bid that would have the best value to the city was from El Valle Investments of Brownsville, and their bid had a base bid of $540,000 cash, or the appraised value, and then there were several other added value items, one of being the Simmons Boulevard construction, which will be a street that will be built through the property and dedicated to the city. I checked these numbers at our Engineering Department, they confirmed that that would be an accurate value for that particular road segment. The, the cost of the land, which will be deeded back to the city at $20,000, and then an interesting added value to this is a 49-acre park site, not adjacent to this property, but on Alton Glor Boulevard, of all places, with a value of $704,000, and then an environmental study with a value of $3,250. So the total bid or the total value coming back to the city is $923,275. I asked Mr. Goza to take a look at the bids and see if he had any particular reaction to the bids that were received, and he found that he concurred with purchasing recommendation to go with this bid.
Any questions?
My only question is, there was an article written about this possibly going to litigation. Do you see this going to litigation? It's standing up in court.
I'll defer to Mr. Goza, that's his area.
Jim?
Commissioner, I've, I've not heard anything personally about that, I've only read as you have, but, no, it's my, it's my belief that it was done correctly, we followed the statute, and that, that the bids were tabulated correctly and that the, that we followed the procedure every step.
Okay. All right.
That being the case, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 22.
Item 22, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of vehicles for various city departments.
Mayor, Commissioners, our Fleet Administrator, Ivan Welker, will present this item.
Mayor, members of, of the commission, good evening. Purchasing Office solicited formal sealed bids for the aforementioned purchases. Legal advertisement appeared in the Brownsville Herald on 27th of February. A pre-bid meeting was conducted on March 8, 2006. Sealed formal bids were opened for the subject project on March 24th of '06. The attached bid tabulation is an analysis of the bids. What we're doing is we're buying seven, seven vehicles, and if I may, I'd like to write, I'd like to speak to the recommendation for each one, and then ask for your, ask for a single vote afterwards. First is a consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of one 2007 Ford pickup for the Brownsville Fire Department to Tipton Ford, Brownsville, Texas, the lowest responsible bidder in an amount of $32,896. Consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of one new '07 model Ford Taurus sedan to the Fire Department to Tipton Ford, the lowest bidder in an amount of $12,688. Consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of four new '07 models Ford Taurus four-door sedans to the Brownsville Police Department from Tipton Ford, the lowest bidder in an amount of $12,688, for a total of $50,752. And the last item is consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of one new '07 Chevy Silver Auto pickup for the Public Works Office to Tippetex Chevrolet, the lowest bidder in an amount of $13,932.35. The total of these seven vehicles is $110,268.35.
Those all of the items?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded in by Commissioner Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Item 23.
Item 23, consideration in action to award a change order number one for the Veterans Memorial Park.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, this project is basically complete. We're at the point of acceptance for substantial completion. This change order is really some housekeeping issues that we are doing at the end of the project, to it, moving of a bus stop in that immediate area and the reconstruction. We'd like for Roth Construction to do that since they did one already, and then we want to rearrange some of the fencing panels in the immediate entry area to the park. The total value of this change order is $15,881. The funding sources are coming from three different departments. One correction in your agenda item is a $2,500 item from the library is actually coming instead from the Veteran Park Capital Projects Fund. The account number is, is listed. So the funding is in place for this change order, and we request your consideration.
All right, this is an action.
So move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioners, Arroyo, seconded by Commissioners Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Again, we'll remind everybody that the dedication ceremony for Veterans Park is planned for Memorial Day, May the 29th. Details to, to be coming. Next item.
Item number 24, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of one Sony AnyCast station live content producer for the Brownsville Public Library System.
Mayor and Commissioners, the Purchasing Department has solicited proposals from B&amp;H Photo Video for the purchase of one Sony AnyCast station live content producer for our library system. The Brownsville Public Library System has worked together with B&amp;H Photo to select live audio and video content production equipment based on their departmental needs. B&amp;H Photo Video is the buyboard awarded contractor for professional video content production equipment. Therefore, we are recommending your consideration in action to award this contract to B&amp;H Photo of New York City in the amount of $17,758. Funding is in place through the library budget.
Paul, could you give me, I'm sorry, and I know that we probably, we want to go home.
All right.
Could you give me an example as to what we would use this for?
Yeah, what exactly is this good for?
I think the gentleman standing to my left is more prepared to give you that example than I am, since I asked him to be ready to do that.
Step aside, step in front of the camera for a change, Mr. McCoy.
Get in front of your camera.
If you could please state your name.
James McCoy with the Brownsville Public Library System, Mayor, Commissioners. What this piece of equipment does, it, we have a similar piece over here that we use for the commission meetings to go from camera to camera in a live environment. What this is, is a mobile version of that in simple terms.
Would allow you, well, is this kind of the equipment that we need to try to go live onsite?
This is a piece leading to that. It doesn't let us broadcast live, but it's a necessary component to build up to that.
All right, this is an action item.
Would it approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Leguia.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Zanetti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have no public comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned.